Hey, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Revere City Council. Today is September 23rd, 2013. Please rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in any way, or else.
Roll call of the members. Counselor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Counselor Correggio.
Here.
Here, Counselor Gino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas.
Here.
Here, Counselor Patch.
Here.
Here, Counselor Penta.
Here.
Here, Counselor Powers.
Here.
Here, Counselor Riordan.
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, a quorum is present.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, due to the emergency situation that has come up on a personnel issue in the city of Revere and the Revere Police Department, I am asking that the city council suspend the rules for going into the purpose of executive session to discuss a Revere Police Department issue that cannot at this time be discussed in public. So I would ask that we have a motion to suspend the rules to go into executive session. In favor, all opposed? On the suspension of rules, roll call. Okay, on going into executive session, roll call.
Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, executive session has been called.
And I would remind everybody that as soon as executive session is over, we will come back to the regular order of business. Back in session, Madam Clerk, item one.
Counselor, item number one, joint meeting of Verizon, Comcast, and National Grid to discuss ongoing utility work.
I just want to remind everybody that I think you all received a copy of the latest PLM report I sent to you by email last Thursday. So I invite our utility companies up to the rostum. Name and address for the record, please.
Dan Cameron with National Grid with offices at 170 Memphis Street in Malden.
Tim Kelly, Comcast Government Affairs, having an office at 55 Concord Street, North Rag, Massachusetts, 01864.
Counselor Correggio.
Thank you, I just have two requests. A light is out on American Leachian Highway in Revere Street. It's been out for quite a while, and a resident called me from Oak Island Street, and the light has been out for quite a while on Oak Island Street and North Shore Road in front of the Oak Island Variety. I called it in to National Grid, but I don't know if they need a detail of what they have to do, if they have to put the truck on North Shore Road, but I think they could get it from Oak Island Street to BOP. There's no pole number on there also.
Excuse me, counselors, just for the future, keep this to double poles. You know, if you have a light situation, you can go online to do it at nationalgrid.org. They have a light safety program that you can actually report it by email or online, okay? So please keep these proceedings to the double poles. Mr. Cameron, will you give us an update on your pole situation?
I will. I did get a call earlier this afternoon that Stan had an emergency and could not attend tonight. We got in the double pole situation on the National Grid side. As I said last month, we are committed to, we have approximately ninety double poles that we're still on, and we are committed to get all of those done by the end of the year. We're actually going to hire a contractor to commit here, and it's going to start sometime in October. And as soon as we're off, obviously it'll move across the chain. I did talk to Stan about his, he's got about forty on here. He'd actually like to see, they like to come in and do sixty or seventy or more at a time. So as soon as we're off, hopefully it can get through Fire Alarm, we know it gets through Comcast pretty quick, and those poles can be, you know, moved over to Verizon's queue, and they're on board to come in with big numbers to try to get those numbers down as well.
Cool. Tim, you've got anything to add to any of these situations?
We, as president, we moved about twenty-five transfers, made twenty-five transfers since last month. So we have, on Friday it was three, we're up to five poles, ball and court. So we'll get those moving as soon as possible, as soon as they come our way. We've been moving them.
Okay. Chief, thank you for coming tonight. I know you're an integral part of this program.
We have about twelve ball and court poles. I spoke to our contractor, actually yesterday, and he's going to get right on those. And I think we have another, probably eight or ten we're on the pole, and then we haven't been given ball and courters yet. But again, it's a cost to us, we try to meter it out as we go, and we'll take care of it.
Appreciate it very much. Counselor Powers. Thank you, Mr. President. The, there's a pole at the corner of Gilbert Avenue and North Shore Road, it's a double pole, that I've had many calls on. And if we could, I'd like to get that resolved and the other double poles that are in the area. Now, Stan Yusevich isn't here this evening, and I spoke to you earlier, and you indicated to me that with regard to the pole on Rice Avenue.
Yes, that.
It's Mr. McCush's house?
Correct. Right now, that is owned by both us and Verizon.
Okay. As you know, we've been out there three or four times, we've had site visits with engineers from Verizon and from National Grid. And I think it's been agreed that there are three ways that that pole can be removed out of the gentleman's backyard. I'm hearing, when I spoke to you earlier this evening, you indicated that Verizon had not signed off transfer of ownership of that pole to National Grid. Is that correct?
Right. We, it's our understanding that they have removed their wires from the pole.
They are off the pole, correct.
Right. And then they have to, in order for us, because we don't, as you know, we don't set poles in the city of Revere that are.
I understand that, yeah.
So once the, once we have the paperwork which actually transfers the ownership over to us, then we can legally go in and set that pole.
Okay. Can you do this for me? Can you, sometime this week, see if you can facilitate the paperwork on that so we can get that pole removed from the gentleman's backyard?
I'll ask Stan about it.
Because he's very anxious. As you know, this has been going on for like almost a year now.
Right.
And, you know, the winter's coming, and I know he'd like to have that pole removed because he wants to build a shed in his backyard, and that pole is prohibiting him from doing that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. Throw you to Dan. Then I didn't catch, when the president asked you, did you come up with a number how many electric company actually moved in the past month?
Ninety poles.
Ninety. Yes, I see it quite a bit in the Ward one, I was trying to thank you, but, I mean, there's a reason why there were so many, they've been there for so long. And when you said that Stan said he waits until at least seventy before he moves them, that's.
Well, what I was, the point I'm trying to make is, when they come in, they want to attack a big, big number, because they're, obviously, their crews are working all over. So there's work that he can do now, he doesn't realize that, he just said that today, but as we move off these poles, which we'll be doing soon, and we'll be off all of them by the end of the year, those numbers are going to increase on his side as well. So they are putting resources together, knowing that that's coming.
All right. I just think it's a high number before they tackle it, but I want to thank you, because I know you've been in my area quite a bit over the past few weeks, and hopefully you see these poles come down very shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, counselors. Dan and I have spoken, and I spoke to Tim all the time, most of the things I have now for Stan, but that's, you know, I know there's going to be a lot of poles coming down the line. I saw two poles that are ready to be taken out, you know, by Verizon. The one on 392 on Ocean, Ocean Haven Beach Street, and, I'm sorry, 312. And also the one on Revere Beach Parkway, number forty-eight. Those are ready to come out, all the wires are off. So I thank you guys for that, for that work, and we'll just wait for Stan to do his thing, and then we can move on from there. But at least we're pecking away at it, and I understand your bosses, you know, out to, you know, shoot down some poles with his fifty cal, so we appreciate that very much. Hearing no other counselors, thank you, gentlemen, we'll move on.
Counselor, item number two, hearing called is ordered upon the proposed loan order, CY 2013, CWSRF construction project, this is for emergency funding for Winthrop Avenue sewer lines.
Okay, just to give everybody advance notice, this will be put into Ways and Means. This is the public hearing, so we will not vote on this one, but I'm going to ask for proponents, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I know they're setting up here, and so I just very briefly want to remind you of our conversation we had at the last city council meeting, that we would be coming back and asking for this emergency borrowing. It is going to be part of SRF funds that we have already talked about in the past, that you've already approved, but this is just a mechanism for us to get the money in quicker to do this emergency repair, which as you all know by now is down on Winthrop Ave. It's a pretty significant stretch, and then, based on the drawings that you have in front of you, you can see how complicated, and how difficult, and how extensive a job that it's going to be. Counselor Penta had asked me earlier, and I know several of you counselors have asked me about neighborhood meetings, because people are already getting concerned down there with the work and the, and the blockage of the lane that's going on down there, and it's unfortunately just going to get worse over the next few months. We will be having a neighborhood meeting once we know exactly what the traffic plan is going to be and how residents will be impacted. So that is something that I am working right now with Counselor Penta, with CDM Smith, and with our Traffic Commission and Police Department, and also Fire Department, to determine how people will be able to access that neighborhood. So I'll let Bob Button take over from here, or whoever else is planning on speaking as a proponent. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Are there any other proponents? Name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. Robert Button with CDM Smith in Cambridge, Mass. Thank you for having us here this evening.
And I'd just like to remind you, this is going into committee.
Yes.
So we'll be, you know, discussing this in detail, so you don't have to get too detailed with it.
Understand.
On tonight's situation. Thank you.
We thought we'd just provide some graphics, hopefully that will help people understand the magnitude of the problem that we're facing and the complexity of the problem that we're facing. The first graphic that I have up here gives you a cross-section of Winthrop Ave, and the red pipe at the bottom is the eighteen-inch sewer that's collapsed. And as you can see, that's somewhere between eighteen and twenty-five feet below ground, depending on where you stand, and it's immediately below a twenty-four inch and a sixteen-inch MWRA water main. In addition, there are Verizon communication duct banks, there are electric duct banks, there are telephone poles, there is a ten-inch National Grid gas main that dates to the early nineteen hundreds, there's city water mains and other sewers. So we've got a very complicated problem that we're trying to deal with, and we're trying to deal with it in an expedited manner so that we can avoid the bypassing costs, avoid the police detail costs, and most importantly, not have a more catastrophic failure that could jeopardize the water pipes and/or the very old gas main in the area. So there's quite a bit of importance in terms of what we're trying to do in this area. Just briefly, the next figure that you'll see will give you an idea of the area of the city that we impacted. It's roughly four hundred acres and roughly ten percent of the city. Just briefly, the problem is here on Winthrop Ave, all the way up to City Hall, Broadway, Park Street, I believe. Sorry, I'm trying to point to the figures, too. You can see just the magnitude in the areas in the city that are affected by this collapse. Everything shaded in blue here is upstream of the problem that we're working on right now. So it's a very significant issue. The last figure that I have, and I'll be very quick, this shows you the repair that we're looking to provide, and what we're looking to do is relocate the existing eighteen-inch pipe that's now under the two MWRA mains on the bottom side of the street to a new pipe that'll be slightly larger, thirty-six inches in diameter, and it'll be located in the other travel lane. We were just speaking with Mr. Cameron earlier, and National Grid has been very helpful to us in trying to work on the gas main issues. We've also been working with the city's engineering department and DPW on relocating the water main and trying to come up with a plan to get this in action. We've also mobilized a contractor to make the bypass pipe that's out there now and the pumps more permanent. Right now, the city's using its own pumps, and we're going to have new pumps that are put in, and that black piping, if you recall, that we had in the parkway several years ago, a more permanent bypass will be set up there until such time as we get this repair completed. Right now, we're working with DEP to get their approval to start work on or about September 30th. It will require several weeks of lead time to get the pipes and some of the materials manufactured, that we're working to expedite that because of their size and their depth. And we also need to work with the MWRA because of the sensitivity of those two very major water mains that are immediately above the work area. They've actually been very helpful to the city and have agreed to allow us to take a section of the sixteen-inch pipe out of service and cut it out of the ground in order to do this repair. So that's briefly where we stand on the technical issues. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Hearing is seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. I'm sorry. Move too slow, Judge. Name and address for the record.
I couldn't get all the papers off my lap in time. My name is George Anzoni, I'm the Director of Finance for the city of Revere, 141 Fenley Street, Revere, Mass. The reason I'm here to speak on this as a proponent, because I feel that the, something, again, that needs to be, we know it's an emergency, needs to be cleaned up, and that it is a financial burden to do it at this time, especially in the law order we're doing it under. So that'll be, it will affect some savings for the city of Revere if it's so decided. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Again, any other proponents? Any other proponents? Any other proponents? Hearing is seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Any opponents? Any opponents? Hearing is seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. And I reminded counselors that this is going to Ways and Means, but the Ward Council would like to say a few words.
I'd just like to say a few words. I mean, this is a necessity, first of all. Working, and the experts, CDM, are doing this work and getting it done. The biggest thing that I want to stress, and I will not stop stressing it, that I want the least amount of, how would I say it, impact to the surrounding area there. And I've gotten several calls on already, especially down on Victoria Street. I don't want to see people coming up Mill Street, cutting down Victoria, then left on Winthrop. That's narrow, that street is as narrow as can be now, never mind with all that traffic going around that way. So I think the chief of police, I talked to him about the traffic and his traffic people, are coming up with a plan, but I want Plan B, just in case things fall apart. But that'll be at the neighborhood meet anyway. That's, I'm looking forward to having that, Bob. I'd like to have that set up as soon as everything's in place and we know exactly what we're doing time-wise. Even with the traffic plan, I would like to see that being done and everything, but, you know, it's going to be a long inconvenience for people, and I want to make it as less stressful as possible. And so I want, you know, there's a lot of concerns down there. I'm getting calls now, people see it. I mean, unfortunately, it is what it is. It has to get done. You know, and that's what you get when you don't look at these things and you let them go for so long, and all of a sudden, you know, we're in an emergency situation. But that being said, it's something that's no one's fault, and I think we're doing it right, we're doing it to fix it right, and I'm surprised, when I tell people it's ten percent of the city, I mean, that's devastating if this thing ever really went awry. I mean, this pipe is long enough, I don't know how many feet it's all, and I want to pay up, but the quicker we have this meeting, I think the quicker we put people at ease over there. And I do want to do nine eleven reverse calls to that neighborhood, drops, I'll drop it myself, but the more notice we get out to those people, just so they know that what's coming up the pipe there, and that we're sensitive to their needs and everything. So I want to thank you two for all the help you've done so far, and, you know, there's a lot of work being done behind the scenes the past two or three weeks, and a lot of people involved, Donnie Go and, you know, talk to them daily on it. I want to thank the city workers for working on the clock there, you know, just with the bypass pump and stuff. So a lot of people deserve credit what's been going on so far. I just want to thank them, thank the mayor for his concerns, and every meeting I've had with them, he spared nothing to get this thing done and do it right. I want to thank them for that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm looking at this plan here, and I realize fully that the pipe is in Ward one on Winthrop Avenue, but I'm looking at the streets running off of Winthrop Avenue, for instance, Harris Street, which is in Ward five, and also Elm Street, and streets that run in back of them. So I'd like to make sure that the residents in Ward five are fully notified of any impact that this will have with regard to traffic on those streets, and I'd also like to myself be informed of any subsequent meetings with regard to traffic mitigation in those areas down there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Ways and Means.
Counselor, item number three, hearing called is ordered upon the proposed loan order, CY 2013, DWSRF Planning Project Number 3851, in the amount of $250,000 for the purpose of financing the planning and GIS implementation of a citywide water automated meter reading system.
Proponents, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, I don't know if it would be appropriate, but should you take this one and the next one up at the same time? Can you do that, or do you got to take them?
We would still have to vote. We can talk about them about the same time, but we'd have to do separate votes.
If we can talk about it at the same time?
Yes. That's not a problem at all. We'll just, we can talk about it at the same time, but I still have to go to procedure after, so you won't have to talk when I open up the second one.
Okay, well, then I'll speak on both.
Speak on both, please. Absolutely.
Okay. Well, obviously, I am a proponent of both. In fact, I mentioned this earlier when we were talking at our economic development meeting about how we can potentially try to pay for this out of host community agreement funds as opposed to our water sewer enterprise fund, which we'd otherwise have to go to. No matter which way we'd have to go to, this program is one that is offered by the state, and it offers a certain amount of principal forgiveness, which is the reason why we're really trying to get this done now. We know that the water meters are already past their useful life expectancy. The calls are already coming in now for water meter replacement because they're starting to fail, and we're very fearful, obviously, that that's just going to continue, and the pace at which it continues is going to not only put undue stress on our water sewer department, but it's also going to put, you know, unfair pressure on our ratepayers to not know whether or not their water meters are indeed working correctly and accurately. So unfortunately, it's one of those things we have to do every so often, and this seems like an opportune time to take advantage of this principal forgiveness program. We're going to have to do it. Chances are, it's not going to get any less expensive to do it. This new system, as you can imagine, with all the technology that has come along since last replacing the water meters throughout the city, is really tremendous. I mean, we'll be able to identify water leaks from the time that our people in the water department go home and the time they log on their computers in the morning. They will identify households or businesses that have leaks, they'll automatically come up on a screen to show them so that they can immediately contact that person. So it's going to, at the end of the day, it's going to save money to the overall ratepayers by implementing these new water meters. So, and, you know, just the savings, I think, that we'll have as to not let water bills go, you know, people may have a leak for months and not know it until they get their water bill. Now we'll know within, you know, half a day. So I think it's a really worthwhile and necessary investment that we make, and all the more better for the city that maybe we get some of the, some of this principal forgiveness by doing so. So I would appreciate your support in it.
Are there any other proponents? Name and address for the record, sir.
My name is George Anzoni, and I'm the Director of Finance for the city of Revere, 141 Fenley Street, Revere, Mass. I'm here to speak on both of those proposals at one time. The system that the, and I'll make this brief because I understand there may be another hearing after this. The system that we presently have in place is twenty years old, the meters are over twenty years old, they've reached their, really, their life expectancy. That system worked well for the time it was put in, however, as these, as they age, meters don't read as correctly as they should. So rather than the, so this is the ways that we can make certain that we are running a very, very efficient water and sewer enterprise, and make certain that the, that the ratepayers are treated on a very fair basis, because we can definitely say, by these type of reads, that, in the way this is being read, radio read, that it will actually allow the city to, again, as to reiterate what the mayor stated before me, to see if there is a leak, and immediately see there's a leak and notify the person of such. Whereas, as is now, they come back maybe six months later and, hey, I had a leak, you know, can you do something, so on and so forth. So there won't be these sometimes write-offs of amounts of water being used, because although they're written off and there is a leak, and we, the city still has to pay the MWRA for the water. Part of this program, too, has been mentioned, that we have put a committee together, the mayor's put a committee together, made up of myself, the IT Director, Glenn DeRosa, the Superintendent of Public Works, Don Goodwin, and the water meter person, John Meniskolko, the city engineer, Nick Reistrum, the city purchasing agent, Marie Zalendi, and the water department, Joan Shait, and Robin Sizakowski. The, we have brought on board the assistance of CDM to help us through the process. There is a, it's going to be a lengthy process for us to go through, however, there are timelines that we have to meet, the first timeline being on October, and the last, and the second one is on April, April of next year. And at that time, the important part of this whole program is, one, it's a very low-interest loan, as you know, and then further on that, there'll also be some principal forgiveness. Again, I'd like to reiterate what the mayor has said, that if a, it's in likelihood that the casinos do get a water to the city of Revere, the mindset is that this money can come out and help, some money from that racing funds can come in and help the ratepayers afford this project. I think this project is a necessity for the city of Revere, especially for the water, to run a water and sewer department, and I hope. run a water and sewer department, and hopefully, you will vote in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. President. Robert Button with CDM Smith in Cambridge, Mass. Real quickly, I would like to recognize Michael Judasey, who's my colleague, who was here on the Winthrop Ave repair. I neglected to mention him at the last hearing and Michael has been working with us, councilors, on the solution and will be available to help out at future meetings. I also have my colleague, Jeff Derrick's, with us. Jeff is a water meter specialist for our firm and has been working with the committee and with me to get us to the point where we are today. In the handouts that I gave you earlier, I gave you a quick PowerPoint presentation with some slides. I promise you, I won't go through them all in detail tonight, but I wanted you to have some information that we had shared with the city's committee that is actually working on this program. It gives you some information about the history of water meter reading and it gives you importantly some specifics with respect to Revere. There are roughly 11,500 meters in the city that were installed some 20-plus years ago. The current, the manufacturer of the meters that you currently have is actually no longer in business, so even replacement parts and some issues for existing meters are gonna become more problematic with time. The system that we're looking at is an automated system that's a fixed network system, so each one of the units will send out a signal. We're working with the city to determine the frequency, whether it's 15 minutes every hour, that type of thing. But as the mayor had indicated, it's a very highly accurate system. I know some of the folks on the committee had some experience with other communities where a leaky faucet or a leaky toilet is picked up immediately and it's actually helpful to your constituents. We would say that that would be the similar situation here. The, there's some information about this technology. The first systems were installed in Boston in early 2000s. My parents actually have one at their home as well, similar to the one you see. You also see the fixed network technology has solar transponders and receivers that'll be located around the city so that all of these individual meters will be able to communicate directly with these receivers and then also with City Hall and with the metering department. And one of the things that we will do as part of this program is set up the metering and the billing system so that they're in sync with the software and the upgrades and the other things that the city's doing to bring your technology along. Very quickly, there's some examples of other communities in the area, some neighbors of yours, others very close by, within several miles. We will be working with the committee to visit some of these communities, to talk with folks there, to learn some of the lessons learned and whatnot that they have from the systems and make sure that the city takes advantage of all those opportunities. On the last page, just quickly, the, as the mayor had indicated, the city received a letter from DEP, actually, late this year because other communities hadn't taken advantage of SRF money and therefore, there was money on the table that was available to Revere. So, they came to the city and offered this money for the program in order to help move Revere up on the list and get the work done sooner. As part of that, these hearings tonight and the favorable votes on the loan orders and the resolutions are all necessary, along with application work that we're working with the committee on to be submitted by October 15th. And then we have a series of bid documents and whatnot that we'll be working with the city on through the fall and into next spring so that we can procure this system in a manner that's acceptable to the city and to the Attorney General's office. And the purchasing agent just today was working with us on some of those issues. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if there are any, or sit back down.
Before we answer questions, we still have to go through the motion, through the hearing. Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Hearing is seeing none. That side of the order is closed. Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents in the audience? Hearing is seeing none, we'll close that side. We will hopefully vote on this tonight, ladies and gentlemen. So, Counsel Arigo, a moment, if you will.
Just one, one question. Are we planning to, to meter the whole city? So, are we gonna replace all meters across the city or, because I know there was some, it looked like there was some language in a previous communication I got that said some meters. So, I just want to make sure we're getting, we're gonna get all?
We're looking to replace all the residential meters and then we're also working on commercial meters as well and that may have been where you answered some of that question in the past.
Well, all the commercial, because I know usually what other communities have done is they go after the high-usage, you know, businesses, laundromats and car washes and businesses like that, and they can, they change those meters out because that's where you get the highest yield. So, I just wanted to make sure that everything would be covered.
Absolutely. And then, in addition to that, one of the things we're also looking at is sizing the meters appropriately so that in some of those commercial businesses, they accurately record not only the high flows but also the low flows to make sure that we stay ahead of that as well.
Counsel Haas.
Hey, Bob, as far as the meters now, are you gonna be doing all schools, et cetera?
We'll, we'll be putting meters in, in every location so that we can properly track the water and make sure that we take into account things like the unaccounted-for water total. So, that there will be meters installed, the billing is different than the meter. The meter just tells you how much water is going through there.
Exactly.
Pipes, not how it's being accounted for.
How about churches?
Yeah, we're planning to do all of the structures in the city.
All the structures, okay. Thank you.
And one other thing that was just pointed out to me as well that will be helpful with this system is it also helps you to look for leaks because it has some very sophisticated technology that allows you to effectively listen to the pipes and it helps the city potentially find leaks and other unaccounted-for water, not just what's in the homes.
Counsel Ried.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just quickly, Bob, is there, has there been any analysis done on what, and I understand it's, it's difficult because we don't know what principal forgiveness we're going to get and it's impossible to say that how many leaks are actually out there right now, but have we done any analysis on how quickly we'll be able to achieve some form of payback on this, this project?
A couple of things. The, there's a lot of questions there. The principal forgiveness varies year to year and we won't find that out until we meet the April 1 deadline of next year. In, in past years, it's been as high as 20%, 30% for water systems, although it is coming down. We're expecting probably somewhere in the 5% to 10% range, but if I had that kind of crystal ball, I would, I wouldn't be here tonight. But, the, the thought is that, that there is definitely a benefit. In terms of cost benefit and payback, I'm not sure if there's been any studies that I'm aware of, and Jeffrey is shaking his head, no. I think what you'll see and most beneficial is that it'll be an accurate representation. A lot of the meters that the city has now are reaching the end of their useful life and as they get older, their accuracy tends to slip off. So, we'll be, we'll be starting fresh with the latest technology and high accuracy.
Counsel Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. One quick question. Houses that have two inside meters, one for the outside of the house, one for the inside?
We've been, we've been working with the DPW and others on the deduct meters effectively for, for things like watering outside and that type of thing. To my knowledge, there hasn't been a decision made on whether those meters are gonna stay, but it is one of the things that we're looking at, Counsel.
Counsel Guanasso. Quick question. Will you have to enter any homes?
Oh, yes, we will, we will. The implementation period for this is, is about 18 months and over that 18-month period, we will be going in every home to replace the water meters that they have now. So, it's twofold. It's new meters and then it's also connecting them to the AMI technology and we will be in all the homes to do that work.
Counsel Penta.
I was gonna ask a question, but since you're going in every home, we're doing the other program too about illegal hookups into the storage. I know probably a good time to do these, do them twice.
That, that thought is something that we're working on right now, Counsel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselors. And just so everybody knows, for people at home, right now, when your water meter is red, it's that little brown round box on the side of your house. So, when you, when we get these new transmitters, there will be a gray box, I think, on the side of the house instead of the little round box. So, when they come to do it, they'll, they'll know what it's like.
And there is, there is a photo of what that box looks like in your package. That's the, that's the meter reading technology that sends the signals out. There will be a meter that's connected to the water pipe in folks' basement as well. So, both of those will be.
Right. That's correct. And will this be put on website? Information purposes on the website?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And there, we're, we're gonna work with the committee, but there will be moving forward potential ability for folks to log on and look at their water bills and see what their consumption is. That's available in the technology and we're gonna work with the city on that.
Excellent. Okay, lady and gentleman, we have two votes on this. We're gonna vote on the loan order first and then we have a resolution to vote on. Roll call.
Shall the City Council approve the loan order CY 2013 WSRF Planning Project in the amount of $250,000? Counsel Arigo.
Yes.
Yes? Counsel Correggio?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Gino?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Breardon?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes? And Counsel President Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes? The loan order is approved?
The resolution.
That the City Council hereby approves the resolution for CY 2013 DWSRF Planning Project Number 3851. Counsel Arigo?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Gino?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Breardon?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes? And Counsel President Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes? The loan order has been approved.
The resolution.
That the City Council hereby approves the resolution for CY 2013 DWSRF Planning Project Number 3833 in the amount of $7,350,000 for the purpose of financing the construction of a citywide water automated meter reading system.
Are there any other, any proponents? And I would like to make sure that all the folks that were on 3851 are listed as proponents on 3833. Are there any other proponents? Any other proponents? Any other proponents? Hearing is seeing none, we'll close that side of hearing. On the votes, roll call.
Shall the City Council approve the loan order CY 2013 DWSRF Planning Project Number 3833 in the amount of $7,350,000? Counsel Arigo?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Gino?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Breardon?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes? And Counsel President Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes? The loan order has been approved.
The resolution.
That the City Council hereby approves the resolution for CY 2013 DWSRF Planning Project Number 3833. Counsel Arigo?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Gino?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes? And Counsel President Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes? The resolution has been approved.
Could we get a suspension of rules to bring up an item the mayor would like to speak on? All in favor? All opposed? Loans awarded. Late, late 13 and then we'll do the late communication.
Calendar item number 13, communication from the mayor relative to the audited financial statements and management letter for end of year June 30th, 2012.
Mr. Mayor, and just so you know, we are gonna put this into Ways and Means so we can discuss it then, but, just so you know.
That's actually fine and I know that you just, you just received it. So, but, I am here, our Director of Finance is here. I know it's probably a little too early to potentially have any questions first, but I do want you to know that I have met with our outside auditors to discuss both the financials and the management letter. The city, as we reported based on our Moody's report last week, is in excellent financial shape. I mean, we could always have more in reserve, we could always have more in our stabilization funds, so on and so forth, but we're going in a very positive direction and you will see something, you know, some recommendations that they have there. I wanted to address those recommendations right away and so I do have some responses to those as you bring it out of committee and you'd like to discuss what we're doing or what we have done to address some of the ongoing recommendations, but nothing earth-shattering. Overall, the city has made some great strides and I appreciate your support, the City Council's support, to help give us the financial stability that we're currently experiencing. So, I appreciate that and ready to answer any questions you guys have either now or when you come out of your Ways and Means Committee.
We'll do, we'll do that in Ways and Means, okay? Into Ways and Means. Late, late communication.
We have a late communication from the mayor relative to a proposed loan order for two new fire apparatus and related equipment in the amount of $1.5 million.
And I'd like to remind the council, what we're doing here is establishing a public hearing so that we will have other communications on this in the future. Do you want to say a few words now or do you want to wait till a public hearing? Mr. Mayor?
Chief Dari, 400 Broadway. This is a request through the mayor and Chief Financial Officer Anzoni. We're tempted to replace two pieces of fire apparatus, the engine that's at Broadway, Engine 4, is a 2004 engine, and the engine at Engine 1 down on Revere Beach Parkway that was bought at the same time in 2004. These two engines are probably the busiest in the city. They reach, they have reached their expected life expectancy, that's redundant, but they have reached their prime that we're now starting to sink good money into bad-type situations where a lot of repairs, it is necessary for the upkeep and it is recommended through the National Fire Protection Association that first-line apparatus be replaced every 10 years for urban settings such as this. And that's what we are requesting. We are going into a collaborative bid with Malden in Medfit. We're hoping to, and if you saw in the memo there, the prices that we had, I had quoted on that, we're expecting it to be on the very low end with the timely payments of down to $560,000 each. So, with that collaborative bid, Malden's buying a pump and a truck and Medfit's buying two engines. So, it's gonna work out. It's not a lot of money. These are very expensive. When we first bought the engines in 2004, they were just $300,000. When we bought the engines in 2008, they were $454,000 and now we're up to over $500,000. It's a number of factors, the cost of steel, the EPA requirements they're putting on for diesel engines. It's crazy, but we have to abide by. We're actually using more fuel to burn cleaner air, so it doesn't make sense, but that's what we're up against. So, if any other questions, it's gonna go?
We'll be, we'll be going to public hearing, so it's, and Chief, are you going to put that engine down the Pines into operation?
That's my hope.
Not, not the station, I'm talking about the engine.
Well, both, yeah. Good ability to have spare equipment for repairs or necessary to put an engine in at a height, whether it's a special event, storms, things such as that, we'll have the ability to have these two spares. Right now, our spare is a 1995, and it's really on its last legs. And when we do take it out, we have to repair it after we use it. They're using it right now for the Engine One that's in for repairs, but we'll be in very good shape, and I foresee that with development down the beach and the Pines area, amount of housing units within next year and a half or so, the Pine Station may be very viable to open. We're putting some money in through the mayor and Treasurer Anzoni to repair some of the station with the roof as needed of a repair, some windows, things such as that. We're going to open, increase the size of the doors to accommodate these new engines, and so we're kind of ahead of the curve trying to get there, so if it does come about, we're ready to do it right, move right in.
Chief, if you got too fresh, you could put one down on Beach Pond Station also.
We could, yes. I just need 16 other firefighters.
Excuse me, councilors.
Chief, can we purchase Engine Two tonight while we're at it?
Excuse me, councillor. Councillor, we got someone that wants to speak first. Excuse me. Counselor Correggio, very short.
Very short, Mr. President. The chief, this apparatus takes how long it takes? It's not like a car, you get it in a month or something. How long does it take to get an apparatus once we order it?
Correct, correct. And that's why we're so far out, you know, it's a 2004.
Right.
We won't get them for a minimum of six, six and a half months. Actually, the process that you're going to go through adds on. Once we sign the contract with the mayor and the treasurer, it'll be a minimum of six and a half months from the time of the contract, six and a half to eight months to even get them.
All right. Thank you, thank you very much.
And I just might add, both of these will be foam capable. The last two that we bought, the one that's in North Revere now, and the one at Engine Five, both foam units, these two will have their foam capability, increases our ability for different situations.
Counselor Powers, very quickly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, I'm very glad to hear that we're working on that station down there, and hopefully Engine Two in the Pines will be in service in the very near future.
We use that station on a regular basis, so we need to keep up with it, and spoke to the mayor about it, and, you know, to use it as training and event to different events.
Hopefully, we'll be getting this mitigation money from Suffolk Downs, and this would be a good opportunity to open that station down there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
No, I just want to say, I've had several conversations with the chief, and while it is a great opportunity for us to participate in this group purchasing, I have talked to him, these are 2004s, and like a bottle of fine wine, I told him, they get better with age, but he's not buying that. So, right, chief? Didn't go over too well, so... But in any case, this really, you know, it is, it is important to the department. I think you know my commitment to public safety and your commitment to public safety, making sure that they have, you know, the best possible equipment, and I hate to see things get to a point where you're starting to put good money after bad. So, I think even though we'll be bonding this in the long run, we'll be saving money, given the fact we would have had to be putting money into this apparatus week after week, month after month. So, hopefully, this will be something that can quickly go through ways and means, and we can move forward with it. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to public hearing first. Public hearing. Back to regular order of business. Mr. Mayor, you're all set, right? Okay.
Calendar item number five. Hearing called is ordered upon the litigation bond authorization in the amount of $1,750,000 for the Macharia versus City of Revere settlement.
Are there any proponents? Mr. Mayor.
I think you all know the situation. We found it most prudent to bond for this. We had conversations with Moody's about this. Moody's is aware of it, they have included that. Our, you know, our request, our anticipated request to bond wasn't included in our conversation with them, so this is not putting our, or jeopardizing our bond rating or our financials in any way by going forward. There was some conversation by some of you that thought possibly we could go to a stabilization or something like that. That, quite honestly, hurts our financials by going to stabilization for something like this. We tried to work out a payment plan that, you know, would allow us to not have to bond, but take it right out of our general receipts over a period of time. They wouldn't, they would not agree to that, and where we, you know, and we did work on that for some time, as you may know, because we're just coming to you now with this request. So, we have tried, our litigation team had tried to work that out. It did not work out. They want a lump sum payment, so the best way for us to go, we feel, is to bond the 1.5 million. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Are there any other proponents?
My name is George Anzoni. I'm the Director of Finance for the City of Revere. My address is 141 Fenley Street, Revere, Mass. Looking at this bond authorization, it's one that, at the time of the conference call that we had with Moody's, at that time, we have to disclose anything that we know, and any item that may adversely affect the finances of the City of Revere, or even any financial circumstances that will improve the City of Revere. However, we mentioned this to them, and during that rating call, they were in agreement that bonding it would be a prudent way to do it. If you look on the second page of our, the Moody's report, which you saw and was sent up to the City Council, you'll see that one of the items that they say, I think it's on the upper page of the second page, upper portion of the second page, saying that lowering reserves would be something that would affect, have a negative effect on our bond rating. So, they were much, far more comfortable with, again, I go back to the statement that I always make here in front of the City Council, and when I speak to my financial department eds, and that I oversee, and in discussions with the mayor, that there has to be a plan, and you always have to have a closure to that plan. And this is the closure that we gave to this portion of the plan, saying that we would rather bond it and not use any reserves to do it. So, at this time, I'm in favor, at all times, I am in favor of this authorization. Hopefully, you'll support it. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Hearing is seeing none, we'll close that side of hearing. Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Hearing is seeing none, we'll close that side of hearing. Any councilors? Okay, councilors, we have to realize that this is a 12-year bond, if I'm correct, and in order to do that, we have to go to special legislation. So, we have two votes to do tonight. We have to vote on the bond, and we have to vote for the special legislation to send to the State House to approve that, okay? On the bond.
Shall the City Council approve the loan order in the amount of $1,750,000 for the purpose of paying costs associated with the litigation settlement of Macharia versus City of Revere? Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
No.
No, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Reardon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved.
On the legislation.
Shall the City Council approve special legislation in act authorizing the City of Revere to issue bonds or notes for the payment of a litigation settlement? Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Reardon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the special legislation has been approved.
Votes are ordered.
Calendar item number six. Hearing called is ordered upon the application of Robert Mahoney of Mahoney Builders to Paul Street, Revere, Mass., for the purpose of considering the discontinuance of a certain portion of Walnut Street, Revere, Mass.
Are there any proponents? Name and address for the record, sir, please.
Yes, Robert Mahoney to Paul Street.
Explain what's going on, sir.
Yes, I am here requesting that the, first of all, I'm Robert Mahoney, I am here representing Richard Street Realty Trust, and I'm looking to request the abandonment of a certain portion of Walnut Street. And what I'd like to do is make a correction, if I could, Mr. President.
Please do.
We're requesting, the parcel that is being requested is parcel H and not parcel G. I think there was some confusion there, and I brought that to the clerk's attention. I have a signed, stamped plan right there.
Okay, so noted. Fine. Any other information you want to provide?
No, departmental requirements, we are requesting that. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Hearing is seeing none, we'll close that side of... Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Hearing is seeing none, we'll close that side of hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, we can vote on this tonight, and we also have a piece coming out of Counselor Rigo's committee, Ways and Means, and we will attach that recommendation to this. We make the same vote. We'll do all one, one vote for the recommendation in this public hearing. So, hearing, no councilors? Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make one point here. I did have a call from a butter of the land of the street.
Of Austin Street.
Yes. And I really couldn't explain to her, but she, you got the right to take that street, and she...
Well, she abuts a portion of it, and I told her that a portion of that would be utilized for her use.
Right.
She had the right to it.
Right, I explained that. But you're not building on your, you're not building on your portion.
No, not on the list, no.
Okay. And I do also want to explain that, in a conversation with the clerk, that two letters were sent out to the butters, but unfortunately, for some reason, they didn't receive it. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, councillor. Madam Vice President.
Thank you. I just want to thank you, Mr. Mahoney, for your time, and for really going through all the procedural issues and being here with us, because I know you've taken several days out of your own schedule to present this and to really do the right thing, to make sure that this was all done through our city's procedures, and I think that really should be noted, because you really have done everything that you've had to, and sit before every board and go to every meeting. So, it is noticed, and no residents have any other issues with it. So, thank you so much for your time and cooperation with us.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councilors? Okay, at this time, we can move on to vote on this request to discontinue a certain portion of Walnut Street, including section...
Of Austin Street.
Well, we're doing Walnut Street and Austin Street at the same time.
Correct.
Okay. Right, councillor, Rigo?
That's correct.
On the motion to approve. Madam Clerk.
That the City Council hereby abandons and discontinues parcel A, B, C, and D on Austin Street, and parcel H on Walnut Street as described in the petitioner's plan. Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Reardon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Votes are so noted.
Thank you, councilors.
Calendar item number seven. Hearing called is ordered upon the special permit application of K. Kang Lang Inc., 11 Talbot Street, Saugus, Mass., seeking permission from the Revere City Council to modify a nonconforming standing accessory sign which exceeds a height of 20 feet and a sign area of 20 square feet, and to replace the current roof sign 16 foot by 4 foot on Lot B at 160
All the proponents? Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Attorney Dan Buckley, Dan Brogio Brown, 14 Proctor Avenue. On behalf of K. Kang Lang Inc., with the application for special permit for allowing the operation of, expansion of a nonconforming structure accessory sign, and a replacement of a current rooftop sign at 160 Squire in Revere, Massachusetts. Provided pamphlets to the members of the council, what is currently there and what is being proposed through the application for special permit. As council can see, on page one is the existing signage of the rooftop, which identified as Dairy Mart. First and foremost, there's going to be no increase in size of that rooftop sign. If you could see, the existing signage is 4 by 16, the proposed signage is, again, 4 by 16. They're just adding, it's going to be updated, a little different in the wordage on that page, and have an LED illumination. The second one is the freestanding accessory sign along Squire Road, and page two of that packet identifies what the proposed accessory sign would be. The page three shows what currently exists there. This is an area of the general business district that have very similar signs, very similar LED display signs in this commercial area. It is updating, more aesthetically pleasing, both for the area and the business, and I've had an opportunity to speak with some neighbors and present what's been, have no issues. At this time, I'd like to have any question, if there are no opposition or...
We'll hold off on questions, if you will. Okay. Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Hearing is seeing none, we'll close that section of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Any opponents? Any opponents? Hearing is seeing none, we'll close that side of here. Councilors, this will go into the zoning subcommittee. If you would like to make a comment now, councillor Guanasso.
I'd just like to take the opportunity to take a brief moment. The sign does stay the same. Only thing changes is the wordage, so there's no objection that, from me or from the neighbors, and the immediate butter, who would be mostly impacted by it, they don't have any objection, as was told to you, me, by Dan Buckley. The other being the lower sign, I don't have any problem with that either, so we'll discuss it in zoning subcommittee, but no one's came to me and told me that they're in opposition to this, so I look forward to the zoning subcommittee meeting.
Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know it's going to zoning, but I just really briefly, it looks like a drastic change to the, the street sign. This bottom piece here looks like one of those message board signs. Is that what it is?
It's a digital display sign, that's correct.
It is, so that, you know, I just, I think that people need to be aware that that's a drastic change in what's there now and what's going to be there. That's going to be, for lack of a better word, a distracting sign, that digital display sign. It may be appropriate, but I just wanted to bring that up.
And it's very similar to the digital display throughout the wire road.
I understand that. I don't like any of them, but that's, that's a whole nother story, but, okay, I just wanted to make that clear, that it's not just changing the sign. The roof sign is just a simple change of wording.
That's correct.
The other sign is a major redo. Thank you.
Which one is the digital, the standalone? Which one is the digital, the standalone?
Yes, freestanding accessory sign, page two.
Thank you, Counselor. Making us aware of that.
Zoning Subcommittee?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Calendar item number eight. Hearing called is ordered upon the special permit application of New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for a request to install 12 panel antennas and associated equipment at 300 Ocean Avenue.
Name and address for the record, please.
Mike Dolan, from the law firm of Brown, Rudnick, Boston, Massachusetts.
Explain with, a brief explanation. This will be going into our zoning subcommittee.
Okay, I'll make it...
So we make a brief one tonight, and then when you go into the subcommittee, you can bring in some drawings and stuff to show.
Great. I'll make this brief. My client holds an FCC license to operate a wireless telecommunications network throughout the country, including Massachusetts, and as part of the build-out of its network, it has a hole in its network specifically around Revere Beach and Route 1A, and my client is looking to install a wireless antenna facility at 300 Ocean Avenue. The facility would involve 12 panel antennas concealed behind two proposed screen walls to match the existing screen wall on the roof of the building. The two screen walls would be, they'd appear to match the existing screens, but be of a radio frequency-friendly material which would allow the antennas to carry a signal through them. There's some ancillary equipment that would be located on the roof, as well as a equipment shelter, and the shelter would be painted and textured to match the existing building. We've included with our application photo simulations, which we think really provide a good visual as to the negligible visual impact of the proposed facility. From a land use planning perspective, we're pleased that we weren't, we don't have to come before the council tonight asking for a new telecommunications tower, a pole, we've got an existing structure that we can locate these antennas on. We've previously been before the zoning board for some minor dimensional variance relief and received the unanimous approval there, and we're here before the council for a, seeking a special permit.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Hearing is seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Excuse me, are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Hearing is seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Gentlemen and ladies, this will be going into our zoning subcommittee, so thank you, sir, and I will notify you when the subcommittee will be meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Subcommittee.
Calendar item number nine. Report of the Economic Development Subcommittee.
Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a meeting earlier this evening. We allowed the mayor and John Festa to get up and explain what they were doing, and everything seems to be okay, and let's move on.
Recommendation to accept the committee report. All in favor? All opposed? Vote and so ordered.
Calendar item number 10. Report of the Ways and Means Subcommittee.
That's accepted into the other event.
Calendar item number 11. Report of Legislative Affairs Subcommittee.
Counselor Rigo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier tonight, the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee met on a motion that was presented by myself and Counsel Penta, and it was relative to citywide resident permit parking program. We have started a conversation that I think will take some time, but we, I think, had a good, a good first meeting of, with everybody in, in favor of doing something regarding parking and the quality of life issue that many residents face with the lack of parking. So I look forward to continuing the dialogue and doing more research and getting to a real comprehensive solution to this issue. Thank you.
Progress on the committee? Thank you, sir.
Calendar item number 12. Communication from the city clerk calling for the local election and binding referendum relative to the host community agreement between the City of Revere and Suffolk Downs to be held on Tuesday, November 5, 2013.
Motion placed on file. So move.
We have a motion from Counsel Novoselsky that the mayor requests National Grid to increase the wattage from 50 to 100 watt lamps on the following poles on Walnut Ave between James Street and the dead end of Walnut Avenue. Pole number 661, 662, 663, 664, and 665.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public safety issue, there's been some bad activity going up in this dead-end street, and the neighbors would like more lighting, and we had had discussions with the police department, and they agree with this, and we hope that you will vote favorably on this. Thank you. All in favor? All opposed? Vote and so ordered, thank you. There being no further business, I'd like to remind everybody that the next council meeting will be October 7, Monday, October 7, the first Monday, and then the second meeting in a month will be on October 28 for public hearings. Okay, so with that, motion adjourned. So move.